Twenty three. Um, okay, we'll start with the first item on the agenda, which is apologies for absence. Um, we've got three councillors, I think, missing.
Yes, we've got councillor Ridgewell, who is quite unwell. Um, councillor Whitman, who is also suffering out of flu, I gather. And councillor Hughes, who is ongoing problem at this one's in time. So all three notified.
Yeah, councillor Ridgewell's in hospital.
Okay, item number two, declaration of interest. Um, everybody's signed the book needs to.
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, item number three, to receive a report from squad leader Geary. Um, he isn't coming tonight and we have, he has submitted something in our councillor packs and for us to, um, just have a read through. So he's just given us a written report tonight.
And that will be included in the, um, minutes.
Okay, item number four, to receive a report from the community sergeant, Peter Maxfield. Um.
Not.
He's not here, he's supposedly coming, but he's not here at the moment. If he appears later, we'll, we'll slot him in at that point. Okay, um, item number five, received confirmed, signed minutes of the Brandon Town Council meeting held on Friday the sixteenth of December twenty twenty-two and the one held on the twentieth of, of December twenty twenty-two. Um, we'll do these as two separate items, like more, was that?
Yeah. Proposal.
Okay, so I, I wasn't there either, so I need a proposal and a second after each one first. Any discussion? You proposing, Phil?
Yep.
Okay, so this is for the sixteenth, okay? Any comments on the four, on the sixteen?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Graham, the sixteenth, was that the, was that the night we, uh, we vote for the Plainfield grant?
Uh huh.
No.
That was, that was the Friday afternoon, councillor.
So when was the Plainfield grant?
The next, on the twentieth.
Right. So when do you want to do that now?
We're going to do the, we're going to do it separately like we normally do. We're doing the sixteenth first, so that's going to propose the second. We'd happy to take a vote to approve those minutes for anybody that was at that meeting. Okay.
Uh, I don't know.
No, it was there, well. One, two, three, four, there was five people there, so them people are voted, so, yeah? The rest of us, one more, we're going to approve those. Um, and the next one is Brandon Town Council meeting held on Tuesday, the twentieth of December. So we need a proposal or a second there and then we'll.
Do you second it?
Any proposal on those minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yes.
Any second there on the minutes for the twentieth, lawman's going to. Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Graham, we just wondered if we could have a little bit more detail on that because, um, that's on page eleven, is it? Page five, three, four, the minutes.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, uh, we had a split vote that night. We had three, four and three against, and we had a casting vote which went to Susan Lanier as acting vice chair, who voted against giving a Plainfield Z grant. I mean, I would like that minute, that's the truth, that's the true account of what happened. So I would like that minute, minute if possible.
I can add that to the.
You can add that, can you? Thanks very much, Graham.
That's fine.
Can, can you clarify? I know councillor, um, councillor Whittingham making a donation to Zebra's. That was not a personal one, was it? It's up from your location budget, so I'd just like it clarified.
Yeah, it was from my, uh, budget.
Yeah.
Can we have that made, please?
Uh. I didn't see it.
That's on the previous.
Yeah, uh, five, three, three.
Yeah, five, three, three.
Sorry, five, three, three, yes.
We're making a donation, we're suspicious about it, where that come from. Yeah, if you want to comment, please.
Well, yeah, I mean, clarify it, but it's, it's accurate enough. We made a donation.
Yeah, but as it reads, it reads as a personal donation.
Well, it didn't to me, but, uh, I'm not, I'm not biased.
Um, Sue?
I, I just want to, um, say that further to the grant application from Brandon PCC, uh, they submitted their, um, their gas and electricity bill, but bills from the church inter suite as a follow-up to their application, successful application for their grant. And I'd just like to say thank you very much.
Okay. If any other questions, we'll, we'll move to a vote though. So those in favour of those minutes, please.
Yeah.
Okay, the rest of us, one. Okay, so we're looking on to item number six, matters arising from the, from those two minutes, one on the sixteenth and one on the twentieth. So any matters arising on those minutes? Yeah.
Just covered it, I think.
Sue's just covered that. So item number seven, um, urgent business, any item the chairman considers urgent business? Nobody's mentioned anything to me, so I've got nothing, so. Um, number eight, to receive a written report from the town clerk. So we've all got that.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next one is item number nine. At this point, I will, um, I will propose that we suspend standing orders for the public forum. Just to make a being that, thank you, Phil.
I've got something.
So can we take a vote quickly on suspending the standing orders for the public forum? Yeah? Okay, any members of the public would like to comment? So we've got Annette.
Good evening, everyone. Um, there's a couple of things I'd like to mention. Uh, first of all, on your preset budget, you've reduced the budget for the new cemetery by five thousand pounds. This does, does not bode well as the new cemetery will need every penny that it gets. Otherwise, later on, it will incur borrowing, a larger sum of money that will cost this town even more. So it should be considered that reducing it is not the wise move. Secondly, a certain councillor who was at the meeting, who kept asking questions quite clearly, did not have a clue what, what the budget really was about on an individual basis. May I suggest that the next budget you have in January next year, you'll be having an election of probably some new councillors. Could you have a meeting beforehand so that you could explain the individual items prior to actually setting the budget for the proper meeting? Now, another thing I'd like to add, and this has got nothing to do with the, remember it's Plainfields or anything, it's something to do with something else. When a club or group come to Brandon Town Council for help with funds, and what happens is they provide the paperwork, you discuss it, you then decide how much money you would like that group, if you agree with the sum that they say or whether it be less. What happens if a month later, something comes to light? Can the town council go back to that club or group and ask for more details? Or is it, once that money has been handed over, then it's end of story? Could you please clarify?
John's that one, right?
I can't at this moment in time, no. I mean, I would assume that we can go back and, uh, ask for more detail, but, um, uh, without sort of, without actual, um, instance, I, I can't answer that one.
So if I, sorry, if I came to you with a query, although I'm not a councillor, I'm just in the public, would you actually look into it first?
Yes, I would, sorry, yes, in that respect, yes, would, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that comment there.
Sorry.
Yeah, John?
Good evening, everybody. My name's John Kennedy, I'm one of the trustees of the Plainfields. Um, just want to have a particular reason tonight before you consider the second payment and the preset for next year. There's some aspects of the Plainfields that people don't realise what goes on. In two thousand and fifteen, Brandon Plainfield was becoming a hub for class A drug distribution. And, uh, we were approached by the police and we worked with the police on that. And we put certain structures in place, including brought back, getting and so on, photographing drug dealers, reporting their registrations and so on. And by using this, this process, we took a risk ourselves, but we managed to move them away. You could argue we moved it on, but there was no evidence to suggest that. What people should realise today, we're still doing that. We're still protecting the, the brand from drug dealers and so on. Any suspicious cars come down or a photograph, individuals are photographed, information is entered up onto the police. There's other subjects as well, rustle leavers. Brandon, people in Brandon, not aware of how many rustle leavers we have. We get most of them at the Plainfields. Uh, a lot of them tend to bed down in the warmer months, not so much in the cold months. Well, we've had to deal with quite a few this year. And what they do, of course, is they put fear into the children, so the children disappear. And we had two that located themselves into the current skate park. And I've had to deal with them personally to get them to move because all these children wouldn't come down and play involved and so on. So I wanted to make it clear to you, understand that despite all the information we've provided to you, to comply with all your wishes, all the documentation, everything you wanted for, there are other aspects of the Plainfields that people take for granted, don't realise what's going on in day-to-day business. We do monitor that, we monitor people. And I can tell you, we don't have a drug problem in Brandon because of the activities we take place. If you don't fail, if you fail to support the Plainfields, then that would not be protected and you could be in some time looking back, they're terrible situation. But there's a lot goes on down there that people don't see to make sure it's a safe environment for children, ladies that walk by themselves, anybody. It's always been monitored on a day-to-day basis. So I would just ask you to consider that in, in important fact when you consider passing the second payment and also the preset for two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else, any members of the public? Okay, we've got county councillor, district councillors, any reports from you?
Uh, thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm just going to report on the, uh, the poor phlebotomy service at the Forest Surgery. Um, I've stepped into the arena a bit late. Um, I was assuming somebody else was dealing with it, but I have managed to make contact with, uh, certain individuals on this. Um, I'm now in communication with the head of West Suffolk Primary Care and Graham has seen the, uh, seen the emails. Um, and they informed me that the following groups still get the service around the corner here. They tell me the elderly, the frail, patients with disabilities and those with urgent blood tests, urgent blood tests and carers get the facility. Well, I gave it some careful thought and I was careful how I responded with that. Uh, but considering they're, they're given a phlebotomy service for quite a big group of people, um, and I should imagine the phlebotomist is there many days during the week. So I don't think it's unreasonable for the people of Brandon to think that that service can be extended to all people, taking into consideration that the Brandon Medical Practice in the High Street gives a complete service. Um, some people in the public, in the public gallery today and they're absolutely right, one hundred percent, there is a gap in services and it shouldn't be. Um, where we are at the moment is that they are liaising with various providers to fill that gap. That's the latest update I've had on the phlebotomy service. I've got no idea where this will finish, but all I can say now, we've got a response, we have contact details and I'll continue to try and improve that service. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Okay. Councillor Bradshaw, do you want to ask?
Have you restarted the meeting?
No, because we know we do this in the public forum.
Right, okay.
Yes, does say on there.
Okay.
Okay, district councillors, any?
Well, give me first, okay. Right, um, yes, this is like in the day, I've been working on it for nine months. I think we've got one for six weeks. Uh, basically, we're having a meeting on the twentieth of January with the head of Suffolk and Essex, uh, phlebotomy service, Mrs. Mahoney, uh, West Suffolk Council. And, uh, I'm there, I've got, that meeting brought up by her boss and IMP, okay? And I've been working on it and there's all sorts of problems regarding this. Uh, that's not a small problem, it's a big problem. Uh, we've, we've identified a venue that can be done because Mr. Holmes, the head of Swan Cemetery, responsible for Brandon, lives at Very St Edmunds. Uh, haven't got the facilities or the phlebotomist to do it there, uh, not on a full-time scale, but we've identified somebody, so we've got a venue, we've got somebody, that's just the cost at the, as the problem at the moment. And we are, hopefully, we get this resolved. But if anybody wants to take over from me for nine months, I should just tear it all up and let them get on with it. It's up to you.
Thank you, David.
Um, well, thank you, Chair. Ju- just one thing from the, uh, from the district council. We used to get the data from the traffic enforcement officers that ticker people for parking. We no longer do for some reason, so we can't judge the efficacy of their service. And there has been made strong representations to them to reinstate that information coming to us. Um, other than that, much remains the same. We're battling over the streetlight anomalies and, uh, that will be an ongoing battle for a long while, I think.
Yes, I think you're probably right on that one. Okay, anybody else, any other councillors' reports, anybody? Yeah, you want to answer a question?
Um, can I just, uh, clarify again, Dave, with you, as you've been, you've been dealing with the street lighting, haven't you?
Uh, yes.
Um, yes, so there's, there's no, uh, further comment you'd like to, like to make for, for the public about street lighting?
No, I can't, I can't make any comment because, uh, I asked, I asked Mr. Lucanick, he seems to be, uh, taking over from me on this, so I think we'd best hand over to him and let him deal with it.
Okay, sorry, I, I, has he spoken on it, you've spoken on it before?
Well, I've been, I've been working for like eighteen months.
Yes, I know you have, yeah.
Been chopped in the bandwagon, so let him carry on.
So, so Victor, would you like to?
Oh, I certainly would. The last communication I had in person at West Suffolk Council about, and, uh, my colleague here, councillor Will, will confirm, that they have not budgeted, right, to, 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 to deal with the imbalance. That means that we won't get any money in the next financial year and it looks like, I can't foresee, and I don't know what promises people have made, there is nothing in the pipeline to address the imbalance and it will be expensive for us and it's unfair. And we would not vote for a medium-term budget at West Suffolk because there was no money in the pot to fix this lighting issue. And that's the last I've heard. And I can assure you that we'll be here in twelve months' time and the disparity will still be with us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for the questions, Luke.
Yes, I'd like, can I?
Yeah, yeah.
Could I just clarify with you, Graham, that we, we are here, here to discuss the preset meeting and, um, part of our budget will include, um, budgeting for increase, for possible cost of street lighting?
Yes, correct. Okay, we're all done, we'll go back to the, we'll resume the meeting then. Okay, item number ten, correspondence. Okay. Item number eleven, we've got the accounts for payments for December twenty twenty-two. Um. We've got, have you proposed these? Any second there? Got Phil or Penny?
Either one.
Okay. Okay. All right, we'll move to vote now. Those in favour of the accounts for that one?
Thank you.
Item number twelve is to receive income and expenditure statement against budget for November twenty twenty-two. Um, we'll just note this, so we've all received it. Okay, um, item number thirteen is a resolution from myself, um, number four two two, Brandon Town Council resolves to approve the preset for twenty twenty-three slash twenty twenty-four.
Now, as this re, um, refers to Brandon members' budgets and, and my wife does work there, there's a part-time secretary, do you want me to sit round this table and say nothing or sit out in the public gallery or leave the room?
Um, the town clerk will hopefully answer what he, is the correct procedure. I believe it is you leave the room, David, but.
Correct procedure is she leaves the room.
Okay, well, you, you do, you do realise that I can watch the, watch the whole procedure and the rest of the world, can't I?
I totally agree, but that's the rules.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Still waiting.
I should be sitting in my car in a car park in the wall watching them.
What are you staying with?
They're going to be temporary.
The clerk's just turned the clock.
Take a chance, mate. Stick your chest out.
Yeah, that's, that's right, no, it's because, yeah, because there's a payment in the preset.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to hand over to Graham, maybe on this one to start with, because something, well, dog that one out. And then we'll, we'll move forward from there.
Hopefully move forward from there, yeah. Um, we looked at the preset last week and we agreed some swaging cuts in expenditure, which were quite right and, um, you know, it was all agreed. Problem we have is that, um, when finally added, put the calculation together, um, I noted that, uh, we missed out, or I'd missed, a figure which has dramatically altered the, um, the final figure which is shown on the West Suffolk, um, paperwork. Uh, whilst we diligently went through line by line, um, once it's entered into this sheet, um, it shows that, um, as opposed to being, uh, about five percent, I think it was five point two, something.
Two, four, I think.
Um, the actual figure, um, is eight point three five. Um, question is, where do we cut the rest of the money from?
And the money we're talking about, kind of, is nine?
About nine thousand four hundred. It's that figure at the bottom, so if we took that out from elsewhere, we'd be down to the five point two four percent. Bear in mind, we have already put in considerable amount from reserves.
Just, um, if I may, Chairman, I should just ask Graham, um.
Hmm, please.
Was it any particular item or?
No, 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 I mean, it's, well, the, the figure I missed out on the sheet when I originally issued it, the five point two four percent, was the actual, um, money pertaining to old school house.
Probably energy bills.
Yeah. Gas, gas pack testing, trade ways, window cleaning, firing simulation.
But we can't go through the whole list as we speak. Did you want to defer or did you want a decision tonight? I mean, where are your views? Where can we, I mean, we're going to take another nine thousand pound out of reserves. I mean, can you give me?
We can't take it out of reserves.
You can't, right, because we'd have to.
We've already upped what, I mean, we started off, um, thirty-five thousand.
Yeah.
We've actually increased that to forty thousand pounds and I think we're on the limit now.
Yeah. Um, is there any big chunks you can look at tonight so that we can get this through and get a vote? I mean, can you take?
That would be.
The cemetery, can you take more of this?
We need to try.
Cemetery, we took five thousand, can we take another five thousand off that, off the cemetery? And that means we'd have to borrow a little bit more. You know, where are the big, the big ticket prices?
Well, the big ticket price is.
It's the big ticket prices.
Right, the big ticket price is, um, twenty, uh, code, um, twenty-one oh seven, which is Cemetery Works, which, um, as you quite rightly said, we reduced, um, to twenty. Originally, we were looking at dropping it down to fifteen, so there was five grand that you could have taken out there.
Yeah, I think, uh.
That's five.
Without having to fix it.
We need another five somewhere else.
Well, I just think we can trim that, that's just one, I'm just one person, that's just my personal opinion. We can trim that and we can trim a couple of the grants as well, so we're not going to be as generous next year. Because that price, that, uh, increase, which is eight percent or nine percent?
It came out at, uh, eight point three five.
Yeah, we need to get that down.
To about five.
And I think I'm going to have to mention it to people who weren't here on the budget tonight, that we did work hard and I thank all those councillors who worked hard at it. But West Suffolk Council, council tax has gone up three point nine nine percent. West Suffolk haven't confirmed their price increase is less than five percent, otherwise you have to have a referendum. We were hoping on that night that the calculation being laid down the table would give us five point four percent. That's now come out at eight point.
Three point three five.
Yeah, can I, can I just add that the, it does work out at about five percent if you have, um, if it's a straight percentage. But the problem we have is that, um, it's the tax base that, um.
Do, I mean, are we prepared to make a decision now, Mr. Chairman?
We need to try and make a decision somewhere. We don't want them coming back, it's an important thing, we need to sort it out.
Well, don't forget, don't forget, when you're talking about county and district presets, they are limited by law, as you said, they need a referendum if they went over it. We've nev, we never have had that imposition upon us. So, the, those figures you're giving for county and district, way below the level of rate of inflation essentially means service cuts. Now, if you want to follow that same example, it means service cuts here too.
It's a fair comment, but cutting the budget for the cemetery is not a service and cutting the budget for the grants is not a service.
Well, they are in the broad scheme of things.
Can I say that that mandate works out at about ten pounds a year?
Um, that.
Correct.
On that eight point thirty-five.
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Well, uh, when, if I may, Chairman.
Yeah.
When people open their bills up in March, first week in March, and they go down the right-hand cotton, they will see Brandon Town Council has raised their, uh, council tax by eight point three percent, when most people have not had a pay rise. And I'm, let me just tell you how the county and the district have compensated. Let me tell you how the county and district have compensated. The mileage claims have been frozen, the allowances, our allowances have been frozen. Um, so even though the petrol, the petrol costs have gone up perhaps fifty, sixty, seventy percent, they've held them where they are, they've held the wages where they are. We were, we were promised a six percent increase in our allowance by an independent, by an independent person, that's been kicked into the long grass. We won't get that for probably a couple of years now. So that's where they've made, you know, we haven't made any restrictions on the wages here, but the county and district have made restrictions. Um, I just think we can trim that a little bit more and make that more presentable to the people of Brandon. They're not getting the eight percent increase in their wages, but we're asking them for another rate. And the thing is, we're in a position, we can demand money, we can, and they have to pay her, otherwise the bailiffs come around, that's the thing. If there's some big ticket prices there, Graham, s- say it now, we'll make a decision tonight and I'm not bouncing anybody into it.
Well, somebody's got a proposal, they must put a proposal forward. We've got, you know.
Well, if we're going to borrow money over the fifty-year period for the, for the cemetery, right, then we can trim that cemetery, that cemetery contribution, we can take ten thousand pound off that and we've still got eighty-five thousand pound ring fence reserves for the cemetery, which is quite a substantial amount.
Do you propose in that?
I propose a ten thousand pound cut on the cemetery, uh.
To down to what figure, councillor?
That would.
Ten thousand?
That the.
Ten, twenty, we've, we've.
We've already cut it to fifty, haven't we?
Cut it to twenty.
Well, I'm going to be brutal, we need to be brutal, we need to be realistic, we need to go down to, we need to go down to fifteen thousand, the contribution to be fifteen thousand.
You're proposing?
I propose. Second it.
Who's seconded, sir?
Can I just?
More than welcome, yeah, break a comment before we move forward, no problem.
I'll just check the figures, what we discussed at the preset meeting, the budget meeting we had last week. And, uh, to point to my notes, it says that we, it was originally set to one oh seven, Cemetery Works, at twenty-five thousand. And reduced it to twenty thousand, so your proposal is that we're going to reduce it to fifty.
Yeah, and take another five off of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what about Graham?
Let's just do one at a time, keep it fair. Um, so those in favour of reducing, that's fifteen thousand, that's the answer. Okay, those against reducing it? Obstacles from that vote? Okay, now, so next time we can reduce, Graham, is there anything else we can reduce?
We went through quite extensively, the other night, um, I struggled. Um, we could probably take some out, machinery servicing.
Okay, what have we got now and what we, what?
Well, we agreed three thousand.
Could we cut a thousand out of that?
Are we, are we down to seven or ten thousand? Are we, are we down to seven or ten thousand for the one three seven contribution?
Ten.
Sorry, one three seven?
Yeah, ten.
We went to ten.
Well, I, I propose we cut that to seven. And that's still generous, we, we're on, we, we've got seven thousand in the kitchen now, it's unlikely anybody would come forward and request that by the tax year, April twenty three. So, physically, there's a saving there. Instead of giving people, say, three thousand, four thousand, we'd just have to be a little bit more careful. We give them a thousand, give them five hundred or something, because people have come along here and taken big lumps. I propose we pay seven thousand instead of ten, do I have a second?
Oops, someone's...
Can I, can... So, so your proposal is when we did it, it was one four oh two was the grants that people, Cubs and someone applied for. Our original budget was going to be fourteen thousand, we dropped it to ten and you're now proposing it would go to seven?
Yeah.
Yes, so it'll be three thousand pounds.
Okay, those in favour of reducing the S one three seven grant to seven thousand pounds? Those against that decision? Okay, one, two, three, four, those abstaining from that? There's nothing there, okay. Anything else we can look at, Graham?
I'm just trying to scan through this to see whether there's money to be had. Increase, I increased the burial fees, so that's gone up.
You mentioned machinery, Graham, what can we trim off that, because we don't...
Well, yes, machinery servicing, I mean, that's a, we've gone up on that, but, you know, we've, we've cut the replacement, we've cut, you know, big chunks out of everything. I'm a bit reluctant to take any more out of that, I mean, we've got fuel and oil which we've put up, but that's had to go up.
Very high position because of the costs that have gone up, it's, it's just astronomical, the rises, it's...
So, you have on the other side your budget income, so is there, instead of looking at cuts, is there any way that we can increase our...
Well, the, the only increase that we can, well, I mean, we can perhaps look at our burial costs.
Yes. So, can, um, can I...
Did you, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I was just looking at something.
Did Souvenir want to make a proposal to double the burial cost then?
No, I'm, I'm, no, I haven't finished what I was going to say actually, but, so I was just going to ask, Graham, we did discuss this at, at the budget meeting and it was, it was said, some of the members, some of the other councillors said that actually our burial fees are very reasonable at the moment, so could they be increased at all?
Yeah, we, we haven't got all the...
No, exactly, you have, no, it's not something you can decide now, is it?
No, it's very difficult to decide now about going through that individually, really.
Yeah, I mean, there's suddenly different aspects of, you know, the charging that we would need to look at, get out of it.
Let me have a quick look at that, just have a quick look at that, sure.
Sorry, can I just move the seats?
Nothing off electric?
It's gone up hugely, don't forget that.
Yes, it's blown.
Yeah, don't forget that, yes, due to... That's cemetery town, so that's the yard and everything else has gone. There might be a bit in that at the end, but wouldn't hurt to put my finger on that.
Well, we haven't got the time to go through it, you know, basically, so...
What we've got? We've got, we've got one, at the moment, we've got one choice, haven't we?
I was going to say, so what is the proposal, is it that we accept...
We accept eight point three five percent.
Or we, what, we refer to the next meeting, or do we have to have, do we have to decide this?
It has to be in my certain point.
It's going to be in by the twenty fifth.
Of what?
This month.
January, so we haven't, we've run out of time basically to alter drastically.
There is a little bit of leeway.
We've got a little bit of time.
Yes, so we would, we have to come back to another council?
We'll have to have an EGM to resolve the matter, yes.
So, are we certain what this is?
Yes, really.
Yes.
Chip? Go on, Chip.
No, after you.
Well, look, people have tried hard, people did try hard last week. I just feel we could try a little bit harder now, but if that's not the case, then that's not the case. But last week, we were steering a council tax increase of twenty six percent, mainly due to an increase of twenty five percent in the wages, right? We don't have to beat around the bush, it is what it is.
Well, no, major...
Let me finish, let me finish, Graham. That's what happens when you increase wages without considering the consequences. What assisted us to balance the precept, to balance the budget, call it what you like, that we were able to transfer forty thousand pounds from reserves to the twenty three, twenty four precept? And if we hadn't have been, if we hadn't have done that, if we hadn't had any savings, we would be in an awful place at the moment. We won't have the same luxury next year about transferring that money, because you alluded to that, Chairman, last, last week, this, this will come back to haunt us.
We've cut the budget to the minimum, so next year it's going to be a lot harder.
This is serious, right?
So we're going to have to have an increase because we just...
I just want to ask Graham a couple of questions as he is our responsible financial officer. And then we just have to move to vote, I reckon, unless you want to defer, I don't know, I'm just one person. Graham, is, I'm going to ask you two questions and then you can answer them. Is the internal auditor happy with that financial manoeuvre where we transferred money from reserves into the next precept? Is he happy with that? And secondly, Graham, can you give us an assurance that you have not raided ring fenced funds? I need those two assurances because we, we might move to vote tonight and I need to be clear that the, the internal auditor, I have never seen this manoeuvre in my life and I've been coming up here a long time. And if anybody else has seen that manoeuvre, they should say so tonight because I haven't. Graham, could you answer those two questions?
Right, as far as the internal auditor is concerned, there is no problem in doing that at all. It's done quite often and the fact we did it last year. So, you know, that has, it's surplus that we've, savings that we've made or money that we've not spent, we've put forward to the coming year, so it was done last year, we've put ten thousand pounds in last year. We will have a slight surplus this year, which would have gone to other things that, you know, we have got ring fenced and they are ring fenced, we're not taking money out of money that, it's in a separate account.
The money we're proposing to put back into the pot as such is money that is, we're fortunate that we've had a bit of an underspend this year and we're to try and make it better on the public, we're just putting that straight back in. So that money hasn't come out of anything that's assigned for any project, it is just money that is underspent. But whether we'll have that luxury next year, I don't know.
Can I, can I just make a comment also that the majority, a big chunk of our increase is due to the energy costs? Because we have got somewhere in the region of projected, just on the street lighting, twenty five thousand pounds increase, let alone the increase for the lighting for, and heating for Old School House. You've also then got increases for the yards at the playing fields and you've also still got the cemetery yard which needs to be kept phosphory.
Mr. Chairman, is there any, if we defer, is there a possibility we can trim this?
I don't think so, do you think we can trim anywhere, Graham? That's the, you're, you're the one, you're struggling, so... I'm, I'm quite happy to propose we accept it, I think we're going to have to take it on the cheek. It's a hard decision, but I'm, I'm going to take the lead and have to propose it because I just don't know what else we can do.
It is nine pound ninety four.
For a band D from...
Per annum.
Per annum.
Per annum.
It's not a question of why, is it?
Why are you buying your wine? It's two for me.
Two, yeah, please.
So, yeah, I'm, I propose councillor Everton a second in it, that's, I think it's a hard one, but, yeah, I'm going to have to do it, I think. So, we'll have to move to vote to accept the precept. Those in favour of accepting the precept? Okay, those against that precept? And any abstentions, councillor Whitman? Okay, thank you, guys, hard decision, very hard one. Okay, we'll move on to item number fourteen, we've still got Palmer outside for because he's going to, he's set the same for this one. So that is a resolution from councillor Cane, so I'll hand over the key on that one.
I think Graham will correct me on that, that is actually...
A misprint.
It's a misprint, so it was...
Resolution from councillor Whitman.
Yeah. I will amend that in the minutes now.
Many thanks, many thanks, Graham, yeah, I called in the decision because fundamentally I thought it wrong. Three other people signed it, they called in as well as me, that was councillor Skinner, thank you, Mark.
And councillor Whitman as well.
Councillor Whitman and councillor Lukenyuk and of course myself, yeah. I would immediately propose an amendment to the substantive on this. There has been correspondence backwards and forwards, I see, between the Remembrance Playing Field and ourselves, where there are queries, questions and what have you. I don't think tonight is the, the venue to be discussing those. So I would put an amendment that we pay the instalment now that is due and then have until May to discuss with the, with the Remembrance Playing Field and resolve all outstanding issues. And I think that's the way to go forward, it gives both them and us time through till next May.
I'll second the amendment, okay?
Thank you.
So, so...
It was an amendment, I feel I've seconded by councillor Whitman.
Yeah.
Okay, any comments on the matter, councillor Everton?
Yes, I support supporting the playing fields, but there are certain things that I would like to know what payments, for instance, in the... There's two questions I need to fill out the accounts and which I'm not getting and I don't see why. And we, I know we've always, Branton Town Council has always just drove over and handed the money. Things are different now, we've got a different external auditor for a start, things are very much stricter. And there's no reason why we shouldn't have the answers to such questions as, how much do the football pay for the social, uh, social club? There's, I can see no reason whatsoever, there's no legal reason why we shouldn't know these figures because the trustees of the Remembrance Playing Fields are the guardians of the playing fields, for the beneficiaries, the beneficiaries are the people of Brandon and we have their money. And we must ensure that it is being said correctly. And because of all this sort of smoke and mirrors and no straight answers, I can't accept it. And for instance, like, I'll ask the question straight now, what are grants to institutions like a thousand five hundred?
If you want to answer, you're more than welcome, I'm letting go.
Excuse me, Chair, on a matter of order, may I butt in here? The whole point of my amendment to the principal motion is that all of councillor Everton's questions and queries can be answered between now and next, next May. Obviously, if they're not to everybody's satisfaction, then we consider that we probably wouldn't pay the grant next year. But in the short term, this buys us time and gives the Brandon Remembrance Playing Field Committee time to fully answer these questions. In, they might not have the format currently within their accounts to do so. These are things that need to be looked at. But it gets the weight off and that's why I put that amendment and tonight is not the night to be delving into all these things. I've got that, thank you.
That's it, that's the questions, that's the answers, what Graham got, we'll see.
No, I've, I've got them, I've got them.
They've all been the same answer to everybody's comment.
Yeah, but it's not for tonight to be discussing these things.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I second the amendment?
Yeah, it's all you can say, yeah.
Okay, well, listen, listen, I think we should move to vote and then attach the amendment to the substantive, to the substantive motion.
Okay, I have got two waving at me, I'm going to let them take a comment because I feel it's nice to...
Can I just, councillor Everton and I, and I'm quite happy to do it, have a session together outside of the meeting and chat, and chat everything through?
Yeah, I'll accept that.
So if we fix something up for a couple of weeks' time, we'll get together and...
I think that's a fair one, I'm happy that's being said.
You need, you need to get the amendment voted.
You can't have conversations around...
So, so that's that one, John, what is your question quickly?
Yeah, just as I say, I reject what Penny's saying, of course, it's good. Some of the words she used are quite inflammatory and reject them without any doubt. We've complied, every wish the council asked for, we've supplied every document they wanted, ev- everything we've asked for. The chairman came down and vetted out the whole thing and gave us a hundred percent approval. Any questions you've got, we're happy to deal with it, we've got nothing to hide, there are no smoke and mirrors. We provide a secure assurance to support the people of Brandon, we have no smoke and mirrors, we don't fiddle, we don't cheat. I resent that very much.
Okay, I'm going to let councillor, sorry, I'm going to let councillor there have a comment and then we will move to a vote for the amendment and then we will move for a vote on the amendment as such.
Um, I feel I must speak up in support of Penny, so my, my, I'm only a relatively recent councillor and our council training is very, very clear that we have to, any public money that we give out, we have to justify that that money is being spent correctly. Now, when we make a decision about any grant, we, everybody has to apply, they're asked to fill in a form and produce their accounts, that happens to every other organisation. However, at the last meeting, there was no one from the Band and Playing Fields Committee came and made a case and no councillor submitted prior to that meeting to justify how any money was going to be spent. Your, the accounts are open to interpretation, I agree with Penny, if they can be justified how things are spent, but I feel that they, that, that it, there are questions that need to be answered. We are here for the benefit of the people of Brandon, as I say, our job is to check that public money is being spent correctly. There are, for example, one of the questions that we asked the Playing Field to answer was why there was no restricted funds for certain, certain projects such as the roadway. Now, that is, I'm afraid, to me, fairly basic accounting as to why a particular project has not been allocated money in the past, because I understand it's a very longstanding project. Again, it's, it's, it's not for the, it's for the trustees and also, we had a meeting last June about answering the questions from the trustees. So it isn't as if this is a recent, recent question we've been asking, so it's on, it's been ongoing, I'm afraid. That, that would be my comment.
Listen, Susan and Nick keep moving the old post here, those questions weren't asked of us before and any, any question they asked, we've been happily provided the information. We had another ten questions come through last week, we responded today. The last meeting, you was at, which I watched from there, you said that you had not been supplying information. That was misleading, speaking on this committee, that before that vote, you've had all the information you've asked for and we're open, our books are open, our doors are open, we've got absolutely nothing to hide. So please don't keep giving the impression we are smoke and mirrors, we are not. We're here to serve the people of London, Brandon, look after the playing fields.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're now gonna move to a vote for the, uh, for councillor Whittingham's amendment, so it's gonna be a vote group, the, on the amendment to pay them, and then, and then.
Do we have a name, like, Julie?
And have all of these issues discussed and, uh, um, uh, resolved by May of next year.
Yes.
Can I just?
Which gives councillor Everington, councillor Aneer, and everybody around this table plenty of time.
You might not be on there next week.
Yeah, 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 all right.
By March, the end of March.
You've got them.
No, I was thinking.
No, May.
You've got the answers.
Right, we will vote.
Graham, you've got the answers.
Yeah, every councillor has had their answers, I've sent an email that goes there, okay?
Would we rather have more discussion on this matter until May next year? Or are we going to ruin our playing fields totally by voting against giving them the money? Denying hundreds and hundreds of people football, denying, well, everybody knows what goes on down there.
But you physically, you.
And, and putting one person.
You would close them down.
You would close it down, and you would put one person out of work.
Right, one more hand over, I mean.
I'm just suggesting that you move that to the end of March.
I don't accept that.
That's the financial year.
Yes.
No, I, I, April, so April the fourth is the end of the financial year.
Four.
Well, if councillor Whittingham, that's his proposal, we're gonna vote on that proposal first, and then we'll move forward from there. So the vote will be in favour of the, um, councillor Whittingham, so that is just for the amendment, and then we will vote on the amendment afterwards. So at the moment, it's gonna be those in favour of that amendment to make payment and, um.
Discuss and resolve everything by May of next year, when this, this grant becomes due again for consideration.
Okay, so we're gonna go, those in favour of the amendment, and then we will vote on the actual amendment afterwards.
Do we just make it clear, and we meaning, you're saying next year?
I keep saying next year, next financial year, sorry.
Excuse, I'm still speaking, there's no need to raise your voice to.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm dead.
We just need to clarify for everyone around here that we mean May of this year.
We mean May of twenty twenty three.
And not May of next year.
Absolutely.
Because they are very far apart.
Apologies, apologies for being loud, I only can hear myself if I am. I am not being untoward, towards you when answering.
Okay, so we'll have the vote on the amendment, on Phil's amendment to the resolution, and then we'll vote on that, that amendment. So those in favour of the amendment to that point? Okay, those against that amendment?
You can vote, because you're the elected person.
Yeah, because you're not financially gaining, you can vote. Yeah, so we're voting again, yeah? Yeah, we're voting for that one.
One, two, three, four, five. Four, five, five, oops.
Okay. Okay, those against that amendment?
One, two, three.
Four?
Four, against.
Okay, any abstentions from that, councillor Moore? Okay, so that amendment's passed, so now we will vote on the amendment.
On the substantive.
Read the whole thing out now with the amendment.
We've really had, so we get it right. So it's the part, so.
Well, yeah.
How have you got it written now? Let's take, take you by the line.
I've got, uh, amendment to approve payment, um, pavement immediately, uh, and then discuss and review by May twenty twenty three, further payment.
Yeah, so, or, or, uh, to pay instalment now and then have until May to discuss and resolve all issues.
Yeah, just, I just, no, no, that is to, that is, we just voted on the amendment to the resolution, now we vote on the actual amendment. So this is the, this is the actual vote.
This is the actual.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion now.
Yeah, this is the substantive now.
You can, you can vote on it.
So we voted to make an amendment, councillor Everton, voted that we make an amendment to the resolution, that we, that the payment is made now, and then we have till May twenty twenty three to discuss and, um, resolve any issues. Now we will vote on the motion for it to act, so now this is the actual vote to.
As opposed to the resolution, yes.
Yes, so this is the actual vote on the resolution, but the amended version.
Yeah.
For the resolution, right, there you go. Okay, so those in favour of, of that, um, that, that resolution? You can vote, yeah, if you wanna vote, you can vote.
Three, four. Yeah, you.
I'm, I've got the hammer, yeah?
Five, four, yeah.
Okay, those against?
One, two, three, four.
Are there any abstentions? Have some more, so that has passed.
So that will be made this week.
So the substantive vote has passed?
Yes.
Yes, both passed.
Brilliant.
Okay, let's move on. Item number fifteen is to note the minutes of the planning committee meeting held on the fifth and the twenty second of December. I'm assuming, it doesn't say it, it does say December.
Is David Palmer coming back in?
We're gonna have to do it in a minute.
No, just, no. Is Palmer gonna come back in?
I don't know.
We're gonna leave him out there.
Do you want Dave, is Dave out or where?
Is he coming back in?
He said he weren't going to, but.
Oh, all right.
Is he there? I don't wanna leave him outside. He told you he was gonna watch it, so he should know with that.
Yeah, he might.
Okay, item number sixteen, a resolution to exclude the public and press, um, from the meetings. You proposing?
I'm proposing.
I'll propose, I'll second that one then. Okay, round the table, those in favour of, um, excluding the press and the public? That's everybody. Okay, we'll give the members of the public a little while to.